Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of Monday, October 23rd, 2023, Education Operations Committee Meeting to Order. First of all, I'm seeking a motion to approve the minutes of September 25th, 2023.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Opposed? Motion carries. Sorry, I gotta get into my routine here after being gone for a while. All right, Agenda Item Number Three. At this time, I would like to open up to community talk at this point in time. The Board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters. Please identify yourself by name and state your address. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. In duration, the timing system will be identified in front of you. And with that, our first speaker is Angela Blaback. Welcome.
Hi. My name's Angela Blaback, 242506 Adams Lane, Wausau, 54401. Over the last several months, I've watched various school board meetings and have been disappointed at the lack of due diligence the majority of the board has done with regards to the district restructuring. It recently became public that there isn't enough classroom space at Wausau West to provide students with a necessary science curriculum. The Band-Aids, portable classrooms, busing students to East, zero-hour classes, or moving high school science to the junior high level. How is it possible that a decision was made to move forward with this restructure without knowing there wasn't enough space to provide science classes? Discussions of another referendum were floated to pay for additional classrooms at West, a referendum that will go to a community that is largely opposed to this entire plan. There's also little concern for how students will get to and from school. Dependable, consistent busing has been an issue for two years. Many current students just received bus assignments in the last several weeks, only after parents repeated phone calls and pressure on first student. There are not enough drivers to transport current students as-is. My son has a 60-minute bus ride one way to John Mear. It will be well over an hour if he has to transfer at West to be bused across town to East. Students are already putting in a 10-hour day prior to any extracurricular activities. The notion that we'll figure it out in the summer of 2025, or we just have to be okay with some students having 90-minute bus rides, is not acceptable from adults who are supposed to be advocating for the mental health and well-being of students. If you feel they are reasonable, I would request that you spend 60 minutes on a school bus before and after your workday and ask yourself if this is suitable for a 10-year-old. For families like mine on the outer edges of the district, open-enrolling in another district is a reasonable alternative. I could drive my son's 15 minutes north or south to a different district. That's far less time than I spend every morning just trying to get the first few bus apps to work properly. At a previous meeting, it was noted that it took three years of meetings and discussions to plan the changes at Horace Mann that were requested in the most recent referendum. Three years for one building. We are now trying to restructure an entire district, merging and closing schools, rewriting curriculum, shifting grade levels to different buildings, changing mascots, and making almost every student in the district eligible for busing after only eight weeks of meetings that the broader public was unaware of in two public forums. All of that in less time than was spent on changes to one building. Meeting after meeting, we find out about something that was omitted, needs to be added and voted on quickly, or that there isn't money in the budget for to make this plan function. Is this by design? Is the goal to get too far down the road to turn back? Twenty years later, we're still questioning decisions regarding the size and location of Wausau East. For the sake of future school boards, and more importantly, current and future students, I would implore the Board to reevaluate how or even if this restructure moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Agenda Item Number Four, Student Demographic Report. John Uding will present, and we'll listen with complete intent here.
Well, good evening, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to share this year's demographic report with you. You've had the report, and there was a late add to it today that we will talk about at the end of it, but overall, the good news is we've remained fairly consistent.
Could you turn the mic up a little bit?
I would have to go back there and do that. So the demographics, the demographic report is fairly consistent with it has been in previous years. As you look through that information, you can see that we are down 97 students, so our total enrollment, 4K through 12, is 7,776 students in the district this year. Is that too far off from what we projected last year? Last year in enrollment projections, we projected about 7,800 students. So we're right there in line with it. If we look at just K-12, we had projected 7,333 students, and we're at 7,330. So we're down a little bit, but those fall in line with the projections that we had from previous school years. If we look at opening or, excuse me, just moving the transfer students, those are families that physically move in and out of our district. We had about 80 more students move into the district than we had move out, and that's consistent with previous school years. By far, the heaviest movement is at the elementary end of it, both in and out of the district. It's mainly, not mainly, but predominantly, elementary students are comprising that move. Open enrollment has remained fairly consistent for the last three years. We still have more students leaving the district through open enrollment than coming into it. So this year, there were 508 students who open enrolled out and 259 that open enrolled into the district. Dug in a little bit on that, this year, there were 129 brand-new applicants. So 129 filed in the spring of last year or up through now. Forty-four of those were 4K students that were there, and by far, 63 of those people, of those students, were moving into the Everest area. So it's not uncommon to get families to move into Wausau, who had been there, and open-enroll back into the Everest district. So those were some of the bigger areas or bigger chunks that made up that 129 open-enrollment students. The other pieces are fairly consistent. We continue to track about 88% of our kindergarten students that are bus. We have 37% of our student body is comprised of a race not white, as categorized by DPI. And our free lunch count went up by about six percentage points. We were down to about 46%, and we're now back up to about 52% across the district. So one thing I would draw your attention to at the back of the packet, which was added today, with the Newcomers Center opening up, dug into those numbers a little bit, and students eligible for the Newcomers Center would be what DPI would categorize as an immigrant or a refugee student. And those are students that are in the United States for less than two years, and an immigrant is someone who might have just migrated or moved to the United States, and a refugee would be a family that's fleeing some political unrest. So our newcomers could fall into one of those categories, but could receive services through the John Marshall, their Newcomers Center. You can see, we have 117 students that fall into one of those categories. They're from 25 different countries, and if you flip to the second graph, you can see fairly static across the grade levels. They look like they're bigger swings because we're really talking about 8 to 13 students, but right now, 8 to 17, excuse me, third grade has 17 students in it, and they're spread fairly across the district at our other schools. So I don't know if you have any more questions. Those are just some of the highlights out of the district demographic data. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have if there are more specific things you would like to have some data on.
Any questions from the Board? Just one question. You know, with 25 different countries, students coming to us from that many, what are we doing for transitioning them into the English language or into their own language? How are we doing that?
Well, that's what Elizabeth White and Shannon Charbonneau, that's the Yale program that assesses their needs, gives them the correct support that's in the building, and the Newcomers Center will more directly work with the transitioning. So we're in the process of really developing that formal program at John Marshall to fully meet the needs of these students.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Agenda Item Number Five, Assistant Superintendent Josh Vigut is presenting a summary report presenting all legal counsel expenses incurred during the first quarter of 2023, 2024. The report is broken down by law firm and by type of legal advice sought. This is a written report that requires no action. Josh, thank you.
Yes, so it's the first quarter of the year, and legal expenses to date are $70,316. Now, you can see the law firm it's broken out by, and the reason that the law firm was consulted.
There you go.
Better? Okay. And the reason that the law firm was consulted. Any questions on the legal report?
Okay. I take it not. Thank you. Agenda Item Number Six, A lot of background work has been completed by many restructuring teams. Now, several decisions will need to be made in the upcoming months. The purpose of this presentation is to update the Board on the progress of the several restructuring teams and to foreshadow some of the upcoming Board decisions to be made. So with that...
Evening. Yes, thank you. So, yeah, if you can go to the next one, Cassie. So as always, we always start with our why. Why are we even restructuring this district? And again, it's to create better opportunities for students and equal opportunities across the district, better working conditions for our staff, better service to families, and make better use of our, of the limited resources we have. So that's, we always want to focus on the why. And then a number of teams. So we've talked, oh, you can go to the next one, Cassie. So childcare and 4K. Again, we've, our work is focused on exploring the opportunities around using Hawthorne Hills and Rib Mountain Elementary. We've, based on our most recent analysis, our, first, our typical 4K enrollment is about 400 students. That's been consistent over the last number of years. We believe that we could also serve about 400 childcare spaces, roughly 250 in the Hawthorne space and 150 at Rib Mountain. So in the next couple of months, we're going to be bringing a business plan to the Board for review, as we talked about last summer. So I would, if, again, if the Board can, has any questions now, we'd certainly take those so that we can, you know, try to answer those as we bring that topic forward. Otherwise, I'll keep going with the next team.
Go ahead.
Okay, all right. Mascot, you've heard a lot about this. So a couple of surveys with really good response. There was a focus group on the 17th that met. We brought in an outside facilitator just to make sure that we were able to eliminate any bias in that process. Diana White tells me that we've finished three of the four student focus groups. Again, representative samples of our students. We will be bringing all that feedback to the Board in November. We're very interested in making sure that when we merge these schools, that it's done in a way that's very supportive, healthy. So we are developed, this winter, we'll be developing a number of events that would be, that would be used to bring the staff and the students and the families together from those merging schools. We would do that over the next year in preparation for the fall of '25. So we just wanted the Board and everybody to know that this, that the successful merger in this, and bringing these, all those students and staff together is something that is on our radar. Middle and junior high schedules. For a few years, the middle school's been talking about a schedule. COVID kind of got in the way of that conversation, but once the restructure plans were in place, they revisited that work. And of course, the junior high school will have a structure to that as well. It's going to, its main purpose will be to transition students from middle school into the, into the senior high school. Those two schedules, structures will come to the Board for review in November as well. And not to leave the elementary schools out, not as much changing there, but the current, the staff is talking about the current and desired future state of what the elementary schools want to look like. There's a number of staff explorations and conversations going on, starting this winter and next spring. There would be a master elementary schedule brought a year from this November for the elementary schools. Great news, Red Granite Charter School got their grant. They have a meeting scheduled with the Grantor, I think later this month or next month, to get some more details. The plan right now is that school will open next fall with just serving students in grades 4K through grade two. It will share the campus with Hewitt, Texas. We've been talking to Elizabeth Channel, who's been great to work with, as always. We'll bring in an update in November, but little later, I think it's the next meeting, we're going to ask the Board to take some action to approve some job descriptions so we can start posting those positions, because there's a lot of planning that has to go into that school before it opens. This has been one of the main areas of emphasis, recreating that 5-12 curriculum. So you can see here, we had a number of volunteers come together this summer. We paid them, but they were voluntary, and they met to begin the draft of a new scope and sequence in all of our content areas. The work from the summer was shared with all of our content staff on September 29th. We got that feedback. Next step is to create course lists. We want to bring those to the Board later this winter. There's a special emphasis on the AP and IB and what would be offered in those two, in those two areas. Along those lines, we're going to visit some schools or have meetings with schools who currently offer both. So our staff will be doing that, I believe, in November. And then again, we'll bring a list of courses, electives, and required courses that would be vertically aligned, again, later this, this winter. So that's very important, very exciting work. There's some great ideas coming out of those teams. While staffing doesn't start for a while, it's always, it's a very important topic and one that's front of mind for folks. So again, you can see here, we did one survey, but the lion's share of that work around staffing will be next year to do final decisions for the fall of '25. I think that was, that was it. Just wanted a quick update on what's going on and forecasting a little bit, come to the Board. If there's any questions?
Questions?
Jim, I've got some questions regarding the finances associated with it, if I may.
Go ahead.
Cassie, I just sent you an attachment to your email. If you could bring that up, please. Karen, I've got copies here for Board members. So I can... So regarding the restructuring, we have, we, I think the majority of the Board has been getting a fair amount of feedback regarding questions on restructuring, A, feasibility, and B, the financial implications thereof. And what I, what I wanted to do, because all that feedback has been coming in in various scenarios, and what about this, and what about that, and what about this, I wanted to try to present what I thought was an accurate picture based on what we know now relative to restructuring costs. So what I did is put together a handful of revised, well, existing pro forma, and then some revised Fun Ten projections, as well as other pro formas, based on, again, the information that we know now. So the first page that you see here is simply a replication of the original pro forma that was submitted and voted and approved upon at the February 13th meeting. This is the one of selling two schools. I thought that was, could do, the one with selling one school, it really is not going to matter, but this is the one that I think was, was most prominently displayed. So that, that's just the first page. You can see down below, it has a projected return of $41,754,000 over 10 years. Well, since that has been communicated, we have, if you go to page two, we have learned some new information, obviously, over the last eight-plus months. And so what I tried to do here is to capture those changes as best that I could, based on the information that we have so far. These numbers are not going to be 100% correct, but I would put forward that they are more correct than what we knew in the original pro forma. So some of the significant changes. Cassie, if you could scroll up. So first of all, I removed the $19,211,866 dollar amount that was slotted because of unneeded capital improvements. You can't mix capital expenditures that we don't have revenue available to support and count that as savings. That is akin to saying, I'm not going to spend $500,000 on the Ferrari, even though I never had a half million dollars to buy the Ferrari. It does my budget no good if I have no revenue to support it, okay? And besides, capital expenditures are something that is depreciated over time. It's not a yearly thing that you can, even if there were revenue to support it, you can't just deduct it annually. You would have to depreciate it over the requisite number of years. Secondly, lowered left, in '25, 20, I'm sorry, '24, '25, I included $200,000 for the secondary curriculum review staff time. Originally, that was booked at zero. I'm assuming that's because, I think it was 1,200, or 6,000 hours, or 1,200 hours. It was booked at zero, and I assume that was become this, because the staff is already on board and they'll be getting paid regardless, but there is clearly opportunity cost there. If we're going to be paying the staff to work on this and not on what they would be doing otherwise, that is a cost that must be associated with the project. Third, I reduced the student growth to 50 a year from 2029 forward, as the current plan only addresses maybe two of the top 10 reasons students are enrolling out. And that just altered the amount of student growth revenue that was projected through 2033, 2034. Transportation costs, this is an interesting one. The original budget amount slotted for, for transportation costs, you can see, it starts, there we go, row 19, various operational costs, transportation, insurance, purchase services, was at $46,000, and obviously, it went up. I'm assuming that's inflation factored in over the next 10 years. So if you look at our current spend on busing, we spend about 3.1 million annually. With our next busing contract coming due, I think when Bob was here, he, he tried to forewarn us, there's going to be a steep increase. We all know that. So if we peg that, that increase at 25% just for additional busing for current structure, okay? Then you add on, what we were told by, by first student is that they thought with 10 additional routes, which is about 20% increase in transportation cost, that will add just for the restructuring routes, $775,000 annually to the expenses. That contract, I'm assuming, would go for five years. After that, if we saw another increase, it would become 930,000 just for the restructuring transportation costs alone. Let's see, I increased the mascot and uniforms to 1.5 million. That was 500,000. I don't know what that, if the 1.5 million is, is enough. I don't know if it's too much. We heard, you know, the anecdotal feedback was that it's in the millions. That can obviously be changed when we get updated numbers. I increased branding to half a million dollars. It was 106,000. I added the $6 million in for next year. That was the placeholder for the additional science rooms at West, which are a requirement to make this happen. I know there's discussion over, well, we need those science rooms regardless. We don't need the science rooms simply because of continuing as-is. We would need them. It's a requirement. Mr. Scheidler sat here and said, we can't schedule this many science students if we combine schools. So that 6 million has got to be attached to this project because it's a requirement. Reduce the staffing, the reduced staffing benefits are simply a question mark due to the intent to double up on some of the most expensive resources in the schools. And overall, the plan approved on February 13th had a project cost of 1.3 million, and right now, we're about seven X of that for consideration. Okay? So if you take those numbers, roll forward to the next page, and you look at our general fund projection, so this was provided to us by Bob Test February 27th of this year. You can see surplus deficit in red, and if you scroll down, you can see ending fund balance goes from $33 million down to $14 million over the next five years. That assumes the revenues and the costs that are associated with what we know so far. That has nothing to do with restructuring. This is what was in the books. If you go to the next slide, I pulled forward what the additional costs or benefits from the restructuring are going to be. And you can see there that the, the ending fund balance is now $9 million over that same five-year period, and a revised fund balance as percent of expenditures is 7.3%. So, and that is nothing more than to provide perspective on what it would be, or what the impact would be of these additional restructuring costs. Okay? I'm going to stop there on, on this one. Are there? And keeping my, so my, my goal with this, I want to give the Board and the community something to react to. I don't expect this to be dissected, and obviously, there's no action required, but I would request that we take the next few weeks to digest this and consider a motion based on what I'm going to put forward here in a, in a second. Okay? So is that clear? I don't, I'm not trying to drop this on anyone. Take some time, digest it, community, look at it, feedback, fix the numbers, whatever you got to do. I hope that they're close. If they're not, we can adjust them accordingly. So rather than sit and complain about all the things that are going to cost more, and I know it's been frustrating for a lot of folks, I thought, well, let, let's put something forward, which I think is what the community's been asking for, at least a lot of the feedback that I've been getting, is put something forward that may be an alternative to, to realizing some savings and accomplishing some of the other goals that, that were discussed, I don't know, directly addressed by the restructuring, but, but other goals. First would be, oh, my apologies. So the first would be to continue the current referendum projects, except for elementary schools that have been identified for possible consolidation. We would finish those out, finish it, our partnership with NEXUS, and terminate the referendum and NEXUS agreements when those are completed. High schools, keep current high school structure with Wausau East and Wausau West, nine through 12, same branding and mascots. Rationalize course offerings between the high schools, leveraging student, parent, and staff feedback to decide which classes should be part of the go-forward curricul, develop solutions and costs to deliver those classes to both schools if needed. Invest in value-added services rather than spending 3/4 of a million dollars annually to bus kids across the city. For example, we could hire another business teacher at East to deliver the agreed-upon go-forward business classes. Implement the same scheduling system to allow for classes to be taught in combination of virtual and in-person. And continue the curriculum review and all the good work that has been going on for the go-forward classes so we can deliver a consistent model to the students. Middle schools, keep John Mear and Horace Mann, six through eight. Elementary schools, examine the current footprint and decide which consolidation makes sense. Much of this has been done, but we need to consider new factors such as Montessori and Lincoln and the Charter School at Hewitt. Engage a third party to estimate our cost and timeline to right-size the go-forward elementary schools to accommodate 4K through fifth grade. This would allow for kids to attend three schools in 13 years versus five, thus eliminating two unnecessary transitions. Daycare, scrap the daycare partnership plan with the YMCA. Assess the feasibility of using funds that would have been spent keeping buildings open and offering childcare subsidies to eligible district employees. Longfellow, assess the possibility of closing Longfellow and relocate to existing spaces in one or more of the underby secondary schools. in one or more of the underby secondary schools. Benefits of doing this, eliminates the current Field of Dreams approach of, if we build it, the two-hundred-and-thirty-nine students that transfer out will come. It eliminates uncertainty for parents, provides a clear path of where their children will be going and when. For students, a clear path of what their student experience will be. Again, two transitions. Staff, they will know where they will be teaching it, at what level. Taxpayers, will have a clear picture of benefits and costs of elementary footprint analysis and how any requested referendum funds would be used. Community, first step in beginning to rebuild trust and support for the district overall. This also provides well-defined and affordable fiscal model that will take advantage of operational savings at the elementary level if the footprint is decreased. Eliminates the need to spend millions on non-value-added services such as busing, branding, and mascots. And finally, it provides a common sense plan that will deliver educational value and cost savings using a rate and pace of change that is consistent with the community's appetite for such change. Last slide, the alternative pro forma. So what I've done here is adjusted the cost based on if those actions were taken. And you can see, long-term, we end up with a fourteen million dollar realized benefit over the long haul, but we're only investing ten million dollars rather than the, the thirty-some million associated with the current, the current plan. This eliminates additional transportation cost, mascot, uniform cost, signage, branding, and construction cost for the science rooms. And again, I'm, I'm not suggesting that the science room should not have discussion because there may be other needs for them, but in this context, again, those costs are associated with, with the restructuring plan. So, all I'm asking is that we take this, digest it, consider it, and Mr. Boucher, if we want, to entertain action at the next meeting, I would be happy to work with you and craft a, a motion for it.
Well, it definitely wouldn't be today, that motion, yes. Because, Pat, I, I have to say, job well done in going into all these numbers and going into the different possibilities and that. I think it really does open up a lot of possibility for discussion. And I think that that would be up to the board to discuss. Right now, I don't have any questions myself, I'm trying to absorb this as we, as you have presented, so.
That's all I ask, thank you.
So I spent most of the day, because it was raining and I couldn't work outside, going through the, some of the school capacity numbers and the demographics, and then looking, looking at where we're sitting now in probably just a completely different way. Some of my ideas are the same as what Pat just said, but kind of still came at it from a little bit different direction. The last meeting, we were talking about, you know, the referendum money, the projects, what we could do with the money we had. So I kind of just laid out, I mean, kind of, I did, I laid out a timeline, and then some of our, the money that's related to the timeline and our projects. So, and it, excuse me, I, I kind of, I, I said about this the last time, at the last meeting as well. So I'm in support, number one, of completing the West campus with the community room, the storage, do the ceiling tile, the thirty-year roof, do the band sound system, the large group display. We did a thumbs up at the last meeting to pay for the redesign, worked for the plans for the elevator shaft. I would also ask us to do a thumbs up and actually, you know, move the money to install the foundations and related, the piping for electrical or pit drain for the elevator shaft, and probably even install the first, first-floor walls for the shaft. And heck, we can make it a closet for now. So those things, we came up with one-point-five-three-seven million, and then it was a two-fifty to three-hundred kind of idea for the elevator to include those things, which obviously, we need to verify, have Nexus verify those items, costs for the elevator. So we'd have a one-point-seven-eight to one-point-eight-three million total to take care of the rest of those things at West for what I just said. The ex, the extra parking isn't need if, if you were to stay with two high schools. And I also would like us to see, pursuing donations to complete the outfield's of our baseball fields and turf, because right now, we're going to have mud in the spring. Number two, East, my, my question, I, I do have a question whether Dr. Hiltz or the Nexus staff lets me know. I'm curious if West is getting the mass notification system and the fire alarm upgrades as well, and that's maybe why we were being asked to put, put those things at East.
I believe we did that outside of the referendum, right? A lot, at the same time, we did Maine. So yes, they already have it.
So West is getting those two upgrades?
Am I correct?
West already had the mass notification system?
Right.
And the fire alarm was required due to the extensive nature of the work.
Of the remodel, okay. Okay, so that's kind of what I was assuming. So I would support doing those two things at East for the one-point-three-two-nine. Horseman, I kind of have a, a question, and because of how our budget, things have been going, we're cautionary thing about, maybe we should just, as a board, remember we should allow a little bit extra for some kind of overrun between our design and our bids in the next few weeks when we get those in, or month when we get those in. Now, my next two points are, might be a little, they're a little different. I'm, I'm thinking of consolidating, consolidating the elementary monies from the referendum. We had multiple categories that were going to do safe entries, for the most part, and some other minor upgrades at basically all the elementaries. And then we had talked about not doing some of those things because of merging, right? So my suggestion is to, to pool those monies to complete G D Jones, so it can accommodate kindergarten through fifth grade with a Jones-Lincoln merger. According to our new numbers that we got, we would have five-hundred-and-twenty-five students in K through five. So first thing, four K students would get removed from the building. But then, on our list, we had Jones-Franklin, RIB, Hewitt, John Marshall, Maine, and Thomas, comes out to two-point-eight-five-eight million to use to bring Jones up to be able to do that scenario. Assumption, six sections per grade level would give us about fifteen, sixteen students per classroom. I would hope that, since this is already within our scope with Nexus, that maybe we could potentially begin those projects summer of twenty-four. And I also would think that G D Jones is going to get construction scheduling priorities so we can get that done, and the students move so that Lincoln can then be remodeled for Montessori as soon as Jones is done. The second side of that is Grant and Hawthorne Hills. We seem, since our road site money has kind of doubled to do that road, we seem to be pulling back. Now, I, I beforehand, in our other meeting before this with Josh, we, I asked about the money from Grant, and our overruns probably have already chewed up the two, excuse me, the two million that was on our original chart. So that money might not even really be there unless we use the two million that's in that, like the interest money, right, in the bottom right of our chart that we always see. So consolidate the Grant and Hawthorne Hills money to complete Thomas Jefferson to accommodate the K through five with the Grant-Thomas merger. And then four-hundred-and-fifty students, that would be. If, if the two million from Grant is there in some fashion, that gives us three-point-nine. Also assume six sections, sections per grade, four K students would get removed. Again, this probably is separate project, so maybe summer of twenty-four that can do too. The note, I'm thinking consolidating, like, all of the elementary money related, right, and go into one pool, and then however it needs to do to make Jones be complete and Thomas Jefferson be complete. And then obviously, the next step obviously would be to complete the remodeled Lincoln for Montessori. With nobody in there, maybe that could start January twenty-five already. And given nine months, maybe that could be done, and the students could go in there to fall of twenty-five, right, Montessori come out of Horseman. And didn't really, when we get this far down on my list, I don't know that we have any money left for orgies. So we have to obviously be able to have some things verified. I'm still very much in support of using that district-wide line, use it as intended as much as possible, and leave it as intact as long as possible. And as we're hitting some of those items, you know, schedule the, the intended items out of that line to be installed and purchased as appropriate. One thing that kind of came up, and mostly because of all the emails that probably all of us have been getting, I think it's probably a good time to consider doing a third-party district-wide survey as you have done in the past, whether you use the, the same group that was used in the past for some of the referendum ones, or use a different one that to, to gauge the public's opinion on the restructuring plan in its current format. And then obviously, we need to create a new budget chart to see what's left over, I guess, from the referendum monies and how, how we would use that or not. And then, as I had said two weeks ago, take a look at the idea of moving Central Office into Horseman, where the Montessori space is, and the cost of remodeling that. Obviously, that start date for remodeling would be based upon when Montessori can get out. And then the next, the next group of things we're talking about is a referendum. So, President Boucher, I can wait till we look at that? Or I can share my idea on that now?
Well, I can listen to your idea, we can listen to your idea, I should say. I don't know if I'm in favor of another referendum at this point in time, but persuade me.
Okay, well, besides doing the third-party survey, I, I still think it's, would be interesting to have a referendum with an eight-million-dollar question for doing the four new science labs, and then adding the parking option at West. Based upon the numbers that Nexus had provided us last time, the eight million runs allows for about a three-hundred-thousand-dollar overrun. And then Nexus would just take care of both of those projects if that were to be approved, so. And the, the, the last point is, Hugh Texas and Waldorf, I believe, can use the same building, and the Hugh Texas kids don't need to move to Riverview quickly. But I believe that the Waldorf group, you know, Red Grant might need to have a couple portable classrooms to meet their grant requirements, to have a separate classroom for each of the grades they're doing. But, that's all, sir.
It's a lot of different things, things that we may have been talking about, you may have been talking with other people individually and that. I think it might be catching some people off-guard here to hear some of these proposals. I'm just taking a pause here because it's a lot of new things. First of all, the, the monies that you put together, Pat, I appreciate that, and putting that in front of us. I appreciate the work that you have done looking at these different possibilities. I think when we first started restructuring, one of the things that we had talked about, there are two areas that we want to stay focused on. From the taxpayer's point of view, we want to stay focused on, are we reducing costs by doing a restructuring? And is this benefiting our students by doing a restructuring? Those are the two keys. I'm more curriculum-driven than anything else, but obviously, I'm a taxpayer in the community as well, and I'm looking at what's the cost going to be. That's why I'm a little hesitant about referendums to be talked about after we're still working off of this one. Let me go back to one question that I keep on asking pertaining to the science department at West. I keep on wondering why that hasn't been forwarded many times throughout the past few years, with the additional of science classes, sections, opportunities in the last twenty years. Reason why we kept only seven and didn't talk about the expanding of that, almost seems like it's a need at Wausau West because the administration has been doing a good job in working with what they have. But is that the benefit for our students who are trying to excel in the science departments, in the science area, by trying to squeeze it all in seven labs when we probably should have had department heads, probably another four labs there so that our, our staff could set up, teach, take down, and not be overlapping with one another? That can be very confusing in a science department, it's very difficult as a science teacher. So I, I keep on wondering, that is something that we've needed, wasn't a part of the referendum, wasn't a part of, and it probably should have been brought forward at that time. But surely, I look at the possibilities moving forward. And you're proposing that we keep that in so that we can add those four classrooms, correct?
Yeah, I'm, I, I think they're.
Whether we consolidate or not?
Yeah, whether you consolidate or not, because just from a simple construction standpoint, those need to be done now to have the best cost benefit. It's just that simple. And whether, you know, you use it just and it becomes a closet, or you don't put the first-floor walls for the elevator shaft up and you put concrete over it, it's there. For one, it could become a need in the future. I have never really said no to the restructuring. It's just I had hoped for all these details before, you know, getting to this point kind of thing, and, and I'm just going to stay with that, that viewpoint. You know, now we know a whole bunch of things. So I'm not, again, you know, I like, I'm not saying no, but it sure is a possibility because of the seven-to-two vote, that the majority wished to do this. Now, do we have enough information that we need to make adjustments?
But are you, are you proposing that those classrooms, those science classrooms, don't come out of the budgetary referendum?
Out of the, I'm, I'm saying.
And come out of something else?
Right, because it wasn't, the, the thing is that it seems that the public has now made this, has the perception, even though that, what the science department has presented to us shows that there's a need, there's an actual need that should have been brought forth before. Well, that didn't happen, but now they're going to, the ones that don't want to do restructuring, they seem to be linking it to the fact that we're asking for more money, and you're moving the referendum money around and things, right? So we know, we know it's a need, but we also know that the teachers could continue to get by and operate the way they have been. But does that make it better for the students, right? So I, I'm, I'm making, I'm taking a stand on principle that I said I'm not moving the money around. I'm trying to give them some level of opportunity to voice their opinion in a bigger way than what they've had. And if that's through the survey, great. If that's through a referendum question and they approve the eight million, okay. I'm, I'm kind of throwing, throwing stuff out there and just stating how I'm viewing it and how the people I've talked to are, I think are viewing it, so.
When I'm putting questions out there.
Well, I, I have a quick question, Corey, and what you're saying, you know, you're right. I agree with you, we're not going to take referendum money and do different projects with it, but we have a referendum, but from what we heard at the last meeting, there was a surplus, right? And what are we going to do with end-of-referendum money that we had? And we saw that little list of options, right? So is that really repurposing referendum money? Or is that using that leftover money to give a need that's been a need before all of this came about? The science labs have been needed for a long. The science labs have been needed for a long time, apparently even before this whole consolidation discussion. And we have this extra money at the end. What would you propose we do with it if we don't use it for something that is needed at West? Regardless if we continue with the consolidation or not, right? We're still going to have that money left over. And if we have that money left over, why wouldn't we address a, a, a immediate need such as these extra classrooms? So the students can get a better experience and the teachers can teach better. I mean, that, so it's not really, it's not using, you know, referendum money that the public gave us to do something completely different. It's just using surplus money after we've completed everything that we said we would do.
I, I agree. But if we do the things that are on the list of the one point five, which includes the community room and doing the extra storage in southeast corner of the fieldhouse, you've just used one point five of the extra money, right? The extra money doesn't get us to six. We're stealing out of that district wide line quite a bit to get it there. And that's, is there extra? Yep. After doing some of these, there still might be extra. And we can use it towards the science labs, but it, there isn't six point six extra necessarily.
Absolutely.
Unless you combine, like I just combined it in a different way, right? To try to get us to completed elementary schools?
I guess what would be a bigger need, a community room or science labs, right?
I think that I think the difference there is the community room was part of the original referendum scope. And so that, right, so that I think influences that. Like I don't have, yeah, I don't have a problem with using leftover referendum money for additional science rooms at, at West. I think we've learned that that's, that's a need. It's a need whether the schools merge or not. The uncertainty I have is, is whether we're going to have leftover referendum money. But I think we have, we have this as an actual explicit agenda topic for the next meeting. So I think I'll hold my thoughts on that until we actually get to the science room topic on the next meeting.
So we had items proposed, put on the table, the time being, to look at in two weeks. I think we should digest this and take a look at it very carefully. And we can move on and continue. Any other follow up questions before we move on? If not, agenda item number seven.
Is it still Jermaine? The next item is a possible referendum discussion. Is the board interested in this conversation?
I won't speak for the board, so I'm going to, I'm looking at faces. Would we like to pass over that? Because we're going to have a big conversation at the next.
Context that we need to include.
Yeah, I don't think you could put a referendum on the ballot for a dollar and have a snowball's chance in hell of a passing right now.
Exactly. Not speaking for the board, I agree. So with that, we're going to continue on. Agenda item number eight. Administration is seeking approval of certified staff job descriptions in support of the opening of the new Red Granite Charter School in the fall of 2024. We'll start off with presentation and then discussion.
Good evening. Just briefly, these are the job descriptions that we were given. We had to format them for Wausau School District, but the job description content is really coming from the Red Granite Governance Board and their direction. So we are just seeking approval of the job description so we can move forward and post the positions as they have requested.
Any questions?
So how? What is their anticipated enrollment again to start with?
I don't know that information. So they're hoping for eighty eight. So these two positions, just to clarify that they're looking to post the full time position is essentially a teacher position that will be working to put the curriculum together, gather materials and prepare for the beginning of their first year. That person will be working full time from the point in time that they hire them until that point. It is a, it is just a one year position. They may apply for and may be selected for a teacher position is what I was told. But there's no guarantee that that position will continue forward. The point two five principal position that they have, they have provided and are looking to hire would be working with their governor, governance board to put together their vision, mission, strategic plan, all of their goals and direction. Their plan is that that will be a point two five position also just for this coming year. And may be reevaluated for continuation at that point in time. But these two positions are simply planning positions that are funded and were contained in the grant application that they made to DPI and approved through that. I'm not sure. Hopefully that is helpful for you to understand in terms of the purpose of these two positions as I understand it.
It's a good reminder to let us know that when you put in for the grant, the grant also included the planning time as well. In order to get a charter school, that has to be granted. And the DPI has to move on that earlier in order to move this forward. So.
Correct. And we didn't bring them forward prior to this point because we weren't sure if the grant was actually going to come through. So we had to wait until we received word on that. And once they received word, then they began the conversations with us about what those job descriptions would be and moving forward to hire. Because the grant does fully support both of these assignments as they have drafted them in the job descriptions. So.
So with that, I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the Red Granite Charter School job descriptions. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure Red Granite appreciates it.
Thank you very much. Agenda item nine, course approval, exploring computer science, exploration data science. Ms. Debby Foster will present new course requests in high school mathematics for recommendation to the full board. Thank you for being here.
I am here tonight with Jim Ling and with Jason Myers, the department chairs from Wausau West to put forward two new course proposals in mathematics. And I am going to allow them to explain the courses.
Hi, our, our course requests are actually a transition from existing courses at West. We have several topics courses that were semester courses taught by our previous computer science person, Mr. Quinn. And those topics courses rotated on a, a kind of a two year cycle, which didn't allow the students to have an opportunity based on their schedules to often take those topics courses. So what I wanted to do was to combine those topic courses into a year long course that would allow students the opportunity to explore different avenues than straight up coding. Because currently we, we teach Python in our intro, introduction to computer science. And then we do web design as part of our introductory year. And then we have an AP computer science offering that teaches Java. What we are looking at with, with those courses and the topics that are involved with those is to make those a year and then extend those ideas. Right now I've got a group of independent study computer science kids that took AP last year that were wanting to do something. And I have them going through the modules and, and working through different things to offer what's good, what's bad. And, and we're kind of troubleshooting some of those things. So, so right now they just finished up with like artificial intelligence. And actually they did that first and they were kind of a little on the warm, lukewarm side on that one. But we finished up game app development and worked on submitting an app for the congressional app contest, I guess. And, and so that would kind of be part of the normal class would be, we start with teaching app development. Have the kids form teams, do that sort of thing. So that would kind of be an idea of the, of the class itself would be major big projects that the kids could work together as teams and, and, and do that sort of thing. So to be honest, it's kind of a, a combination of existing stuff that is already there, but put together and covering a few different topics. And that's why we didn't do a name change. It's, it's incorporating those different pieces and hopefully we have that. Then that extends the same into. Should, do you, do you want questions on this before I break into the data science? Because I was going to give some history on that and then hand it over to that, to him.
So actually you're combining some things to move it forward so that coding can be taught and then move into the next stages.
Yes.
Also including AP coding and things of that fashion.
Yes, AP already exists for us, but, but using those things together to kind of branch out and hopefully have students explore different aspects of that and then be able to make better choices as they move forward into careers.
And this would help us in our sixteen career clusters and our movement into the different pathways, especially in IT.
Yes.
In order to get more IT students coming through.
Yes.
Going possibly to a two year school and being able to graduate very quickly and then move on and make more money.
Hopefully, yes.
I, I wanted to throw that in because this is a very important class. It's a very important class moving forward and to keep the interest from freshman year up through senior year to have the courses available for them as they take it to the next level. Would there be any dual credit, not including the AP, but would there be some dual credit possibility?
At, at this point, I haven't explored too much of that, but I would be willing to take a look at that and see what, what they have. Mr. Quinn had looked at that prior and then readjusted some of his curriculum stuff. So, so I don't have an absolute answer of yes, we would do dual credit, but I would be willing to explore that.
But both of these classes would definitely eliminate an independent study aspect, which is not as good as far as I'm concerned as it would be in a class where you are directing them and moving and then giving them opportunity.
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
I, I'm just, I'm not putting words in your mouth. I just wanted to follow up.
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Why, why don't you continue?
Okay, so currently I, I also teach the introduction or intro to statistics course. And for the past few years, I kind of have the, the curriculum related in the intro to stats and the AP statistics are quite similar. And it, the intro to stats was developed around the idea of students that, that didn't want to go full AP, but just wanted to explore a little bit in statistics because they knew that that was a requirement for their, their college majors. And so we kind of had a little bit of a disconnect in terms of how those students would be able to access the information. And we're not seeing as big of a, of a push for it. And partly I think it's behind how we're approaching that topic. So that's where data science enters. So I'm going to let Mr. Myers talk about data science.
And to Jim's credit, as our AP statistics teacher, he really created that introduction to statistics course to try to bring more kids on board and get more kids interested in, in his experience. And he shared with me, we share an office every day and he's like, most of these kids that I've got an intro, they could just take the stats class, AP. And, you know, maybe they'll opt out of taking the assessment, but they're gonna, you know, they're pretty much doing a lot of the same things anyway. And then, so we were thinking and brainstorming and we have been for a few years now, how we could introduce a data science class into our curriculum. Across the nation, it's something that's growing leaps and bounds. There are states that are adopting data science curriculum as a norm. And we wanted to introduce that as an option for our students. So we thought, all right, we've got this course, this intro to statistics. It's kind of already duplicating what we're doing. So how could we then, you know, rearrange that course and rename it and bring in some data? Some large data type research. So we, we looked over the summer and, and there's a lot of resources out there to support a class like this. The great thing about data science is it kind of lives in that, in the, in the, in the world between traditional math, your statistics and your computer science. And it's kind of the future of where we, we foresee these things, these courses going. They're going to start to merge together. I, I assume that ten years down the road, we won't be able to tell the difference between a computer science and a math course. But, uh, you know, students harvesting this open source, large data sets and utilizing software online to organize that data and tell, you know, figure out what story it tells. And then once they figure out that story, how do you best represent it and share it with other people? It's, it's hard to, it's hard to imagine if, how, we don't already have that course, to be quite frank with you. So we're excited about the possibility. The resource that we would like to use to support this class is created at Stanford and they intended it to be utilized by districts that have one to one devices that are not, that are web based like a Chromebook. So the resources that the, the software the students have, they don't need to download things because they don't have that access. All the, all they'll be using are things like Google Sheets and things that they already have access to. So we're looking at a very low floor and, and entry for the students. It's a device they already have in their hands. And then the, they've been utilizing this course that they're at Stanford with several high schools across the country. Over three hundred thousand students have used that, this course. And they keep track of the data, imagine that, about the students who have taken this course. And over seventy percent of the students have taken this course have not been accelerated math students. And I think that's important to understand. We're trying to create an opportunity. We've had a lot of AP IB conversations. But we also need to create classes that are for just the kids who maybe aren't AP IB, you know, that we're gonna, you know, paint with a little wider brush. So we would hope that this would be a class that would be intriguing as a, as a fourth year elective for that student who maybe was, wouldn't opt to take a fourth year math class. You know, they've met the requirements of three years. They're like, I don't want, maybe this would be something that would motivate them to take a fourth year or be an additional elective for a kid who just, you know, can't get enough. But we, we feel like there's a need there and, and there's certainly the enthusiasm on our side to teach it.
I don't want to dominate questions or comments about this, but this is just something that I've been dealing with for many, many years and dealing with my grandson, but what he should be taking as he goes down the road. If he doesn't continue into the science world, AP, chem and things of that fashion, but goes more into the IT world, which a lot of things, I agree a hundred percent, things are going to be melding together in the future. Why not be on the cutting edge of this and move our students forward? So my question would be this. Are we offering the same course opportunity then on the east side as well as on the west side?
Do you want us to answer that?
We, we can do it together. We are not at this point in time. One of the reasons is the specialized training that Jim has gone through to get the license to be a computer science certified educator. And at this point, the numbers right now are not sustaining that at Wausau East when the computer science classes were offered.
So here lies the problem when, as if I had my, my sons and daughter on the east side, they would not have the opportunity to take these courses. Would they be able to shuttle over to West to be able to take these courses if they would like? Because I'd hate to cut off IT people on the east side because we're not offering it over here. But yet on the west side, we'd be able to offer it to students. So let it be five or six over here that are cut off. That's five or six students and now lost an opportunity.
There is always the opportunity for students to register and to go back and forth between the two campuses.
Isn't, I mean, nineteen ninety three, down at the tech, had, they had the technology at that time where you had remote campuses. I was in classes, Annie Go was camered in, right? We're a little bit further than that now. Why aren't we having a Zoom class? You know, and then it comes down to instructors if, if that's possible, if, if the curriculum meant what the kid needs to be, you know, learn. If that's possible through the computer screen, I guess, right?
Well, currently, in, in full disclosure, the students at East currently, if they're taking our equivalent to pre calculus and an IB course at, at East, they're required to do a thirty hour database research project. And so that's something they already incorporate into that class for all their students. So they are getting some exposure to it. I just don't want to paint the picture like there's something that we have that they don't. don't get any exposure to. And that was one reason why when we, when we first proposed this, there wasn't an interest from the East staff. It wasn't that they didn't think it was a great idea, but they're like, well, we're already incorporating this right now. We don't see how it fits in, so, and we don't know what's happening with, with the district as we learned earlier tonight. We're not quite sure what we're going to do. So that's why we decided if we can move forward to this, see what this, where this class takes us, kind of work out some of the bugs, have a year under our boat, that would be optimal. And, you know, who knows what the future holds, so.
Believe me, I'm not trying to show that there's disparity from one side or the other. We're trying, as a board, trying to get away from that and identify that we're doing all of this for all of our students in the district and making sure they all have the same opportunity. The question is coming out because of the fact that this is part of the discussion with consolidation, you know? Are we not giving the opportunities on one side versus the other side if we don't consolidate? You know, is it something that we have a couple of great teachers at, at West that are offering these things? And do we not have the same type of teacher over on the east side? But then we come down to numbers in the classroom and then it becomes a budgetary thing. So I'm just kind of going down the line. That's what happens when, when you have this type of a situation. And I want us to be thinking about this because of the whole fact of we want to give every student in our district an opportunity such as we're offering there. So the Zoom aspect, granted, there's been a lot of digital teaching throughout the last, I want to go back as 10, 15 years already. And you have to be trained in that as well. It's not just simply, let's put a camera in your room and now you can zoom this out to everybody and they're going to understand. You still have to deal with the students on the other end. And so I want to also make the point that this takes training of teachers to teach from that point of view that you bring forward. Great idea, but there it is.
There's also a difference between saying that the opportunity is there and the opportunity is something that the students can actually make use of. So you can, we can say, yeah, there, it's available, they can do it if they want to, but yet they have to get there. The schedules have to match up. And that's something that you, I don't remember if it was you and I are talking about or if you said it earlier today, but you know, the different schedules that probably both different schedules that East and West complicates it right now. It's very hard when you've got two different schedules running at two different schools and two different curriculum running at two different schools. And so that, that complicates it as well. So we can say it's an opportunity that's there, but that doesn't mean that you can actually do it most of the time.
Good point. Karen?
I just want to say I'm really excited about both of these courses and I really appreciate the above and beyond work that they just, like, you wouldn't have to do that. And I really appreciate it. And I also appreciate that right now we're in the middle of a conversation that's sort of potentially big question marks, but I don't think that means we put everything that's innovative for one school or another on hold. Like, I think I'm excited about this and I really appreciate that the two of you have worked on it, so I look forward to supporting it moving forward.
I guess that was a man.
Well done, well said. There are no other questions?
Well, Jim, I just want to say one, one thing real quick. This is fantastic. By the way, I, and this should have happened years ago, you're right. The going in assumption when looking at these things should be, how do we offer them at both schools? What are the barriers? Not, we do it over here and we anticipated it over here. It goes back to what I said earlier. If you sync up courses and you sync up schedules, this problem is very easily solved to offer it to both sides of the river. So that's how we have to start thinking is we're going to offer it on both sides. Let's get over that, that hump, whatever it is. And that's just a mindset issue along with some logistical barriers that we have self-imposed right now because of schedules. So I, I don't think that the bridge to success with this course or frankly many others is really that far. But I'm, I'm really glad that you guys are going down this path because there's not a week go by in my day job that I'm not asking or asked about one of these types of, of professionals, so.
Appreciate that. Let me put the first motion out to all of us. I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of exploring computer science as a course offering, beginning with the 2024-25 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second motion, I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of explorations of data science as a course offering, beginning with the 2024-25 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. Deb, thank you for bringing it forward. Agenda item number 10, Ms. Foster will present the suggested 2024-25 student fees for a recommendation to the full board.
Thank you. Cassie, if you could scroll down to the, the middle school area, there are two changes, two course fees that are being proposed. One is for the LAX for FIAD, moving from $6 to $7.50. And then there is another request from 4K early childhood and their snack and activity fee to move from $40 to $45.
I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the student fee request for the 2024-25 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any follow-up questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Eleven, John's been waiting back there for a period of time. Josh Fergoot will share with the board a presentation on the recommended health insurance update by John Priest from M3 Insurance will be available for questions then. Welcome.
Perfect. Everybody hear me? So yes, John Price is from M3 Insurance. He's here tonight to help me talk through this and answer any questions you have. To give a little timeline background, the districts had no premium increases, I think, for eight or nine years. I, I wasn't here, I don't quote you on that. I don't want you to quote me on that, but I think that's, that's what it was. This most recent year, we made a premium increase to one of our plans. That was, the loss ratio was, you know, higher than 100%. So I made that change. And at that time, I believe it was communicated that we would be looking potentially at further changes down the road. So we have our, our insurance year starts in July. And the reason for, this is all coming to you now is that we want to wait to have these discussions with the insurance committee until we have enough data for it to be relevant. And then our open enrollment period is typically in November. So if we're going to make any changes for the January year, it has to be, it has to be at this time. So that's why you're seeing this now. So just a little bit of background of why we're having this discussion. Currently, district plans are running at over 120% loss ratio. The three plans are a little different, but we wanted to make equitable changes to the plans at this time. So the insurance committee has met two times, two or three times to kind of discuss what's happening, why potential changes are needed, and then discuss what those changes could be and how, how they could potentially save the district a little money. So what we're looking at is a mandated deductible increase that is a IRS mandated increase for the, at least for the high deductible plans to make sure we're in line with the requirements. Potential co-insure, co-insurance rate changes from 90% to 80% out-of-pocket maximum changes and a small change to prescription drug coverage. So I, I do want to make it clear that we, the board would not have to adopt a change at this time. What would happen is the plan would remain the same and then we'd be looking in July at most likely a larger premium increase than we're looking at if we make these changes. So at this point, I'll turn it over to John, if that's okay, to talk through some of the changes to the plan and answer any questions that the board has. Do you guys have any questions for me before we dive into this?
Josh, just real quick, can you remind me, the traditional plan signature network, is that the narrow Aspiris network?
So, great question, thank you. So we have the traditional plan signature network and the high deductible plan signature network. Those are both the Aspiris specific networks. And then the Freedom Network does have, that includes Marshfield Clinic.
Okay. And, and are the loss ratios all 120% across the three plans?
Good question. They vary within the three plans. So I actually think they're all over 100% at this time. And the, they range from, I think, like 107% to the Freedom Network is over 180% at this time. It is still pretty early, I mean, you know this better than I do, but it's still pretty early in the year, but that's, that's what we're seeing at this point.
Okay.
So if you want to.
Sure. Thanks, Josh. So I'm going to try and keep this short and simple because I know insurance can really tie things up if you get into too much detail. As Josh mentioned, the increase is really minimal, but it is necessary in, in our opinion as well. If you look at the, the plan design on the, you know, up on the screen, you can see that the traditional plan, which is not with an HSA, is not qualified to use with the Health Savings Account. It was kept in place and continued to be kept in place so employees could have access to a plan that has a lower deductible and a little bit better drug benefit, et cetera. The increase would be $100 on the deductible for single and $200 for family. The change in co-insurance, as Josh mentioned, would be going from a 90-10 plan to an 80-20 plan, meaning that after the deductible is satisfied, the plan pays 80%. Some people think that it permanently pays at 80%. That's not true. It caps out, the employee pays 20% only up to the out-of-pocket maximum, which would be $3,000 for single and network and $6,000 for family and network. So that has increased a little bit as well from 2,000 to 3,000 and from 4,000 to 6,000, but it, it does cap out. Additionally, you can see the RX copays went up from a $5 generic prescription to a $10 generic prescription and a $20 brand name prescription to a $30 brand name prescription. And on tier three, it's from 40 to 50 dollars. For specialty medications, employees pay 25% to $200 and then, you know, it's, it's paid after that at 100%. So that's a, it's actually still a very rich plan. It is by far stronger than any plan that we work with out of many districts, probably 40 districts. Really great plan for employees. It is more expensive, they do pay more for it, but the increases are not that significant in today's market. Any questions about the traditional plan?
What percentage of the employees are in that plan? What, what percent of our total members are in that plan?
The percentage of total members in that particular plan are, you have 90 single and 180 family in comparison to the other two plans, which are, which double that. So I don't have it by percentage, but I can say it looks to me like it's, you know, 20% of the population.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the traditional plan? Okay, so as Josh mentioned also, the signature network, just a reminder, is the primarily the Aspiris network, but it is broader than that and includes bone and joint. It's, it's still a good plan. It's a high deductible health plan that's used in conjunction with the Health Savings Account. It would move from a $1,500 single deductible, again, increasing by only $100 for single and $200 per family. I'd like to give administration credit for that idea, by the way. They wanted to make things consistent across the board. I thought that was a really good idea, it made sense. So there isn't an increased dollar amount that's different amongst these three plans. When you're increasing by $100 for single, $200 for family, that's the same for all three plans in terms of the increase. It's just that you're starting with a $1,500 deductible instead of like the traditional plan of $500 deductible. And again, the plan goes from 90-10 to 80-20. The maxim out-of-pocket change is exactly the same, it's $3,000 for single, $6,000 for family and network. And then the prescription drug copays each increase by a little bit, increases by $5 for generic, $10 for brand, another $10 for non-preferred brand with the same cap of 25% to $200 on specialty medications. Any questions about the high deductible health plan that features the signature network?
I don't have a question about that, but just maybe for Josh, do we have, do we offer HSA for our employees?
We do.
We do?
Yes.
So they can put in and do we put in?
We do.
Okay. They put in 10%, 20%? We put in?
I think they have the option.
There's an annual cap on what they can contribute?
Yeah, okay.
So it's different among different employees?
Sure.
Contributing differently.
Sure.
All times $2,000 and for family, $1,000 for a single. They can add to that monthly, you can change each one if they want to.
So the 2,000 and 1,000 are the district contributions to the HSA?
That's a good starting point.
Any other questions on the high deductible health plan?
What was the loss ratio on that one for the signature network?
So the high deductible health plan signature network loss ratio is 107 right now.
And the traditional signature one?
The traditional signature is 142%.
And what is the percentage then of the members that are represented in this plan if the previous was 20%?
So this plan has the vast majority of membership in 164 single and 306 family. Again, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know what that percentage number is, but it's, is most of the group in comparison to the other two plans or the most of the three.
Sure.
And then the last plan is, it's actually identical to the prior plan, the high deductible health plan, but it, it features a different network. So it features a Freedom Network. That means simply that you're adding Marshfield Clinic to it because most of the rest of the network is very similar. So this plan theoretically gives employees the freedom then to choose from a greater number of providers. That plan typically costs the most and it is, as Josh mentioned, probably, you know, running the worst at 187% loss ratio. Part of the reason for that is the discounts aren't as great at the Freedom Network plan because you're opening it up to a lot more providers and then you don't get the same advantages that you would with the other two in terms of cost. But I won't cover the deductible co-insurance and copay increases because they're identical to the prior one we just covered, with the exception of the network being different.
So that would be my, my question is that if we've got 180% loss ratio on this plan, 107 on the one before it, why not increase deductibles and out-of-pockets on this one to drive steerage to the signature network?
So we did discuss that. Couple of thoughts, one is that this plan just had a 10% increase on July 1st, 2023 to help offset it. It just hasn't had enough time to really be at the higher employee contribution level to maybe have some impact. But another thought process was that it might be a little premature to take one of the plans that where employee needs, needs to care the most at a particular provider like Marshfield Clinic and then go in and sort of laser that particular plan for a greater change at this point. I think a longer-term strategy needs to be discussed and make, make a decision on, something like that is what the committee was saying, but it was discussed.
Okay, and the, the 180%, are those standard, I mean, I want to say run-of-the-mill claims or are there a handful of stop-loss claims in there?
Yeah, they are not run-of-the-mill. It's more than a handful. You know, without breaching confidentiality, I'll, I'll just say, yeah, it's just a significant number of high-cost claimants that are really, have really driven up the plan, particularly in 2022. It's getting a, a little better in 2023, but we're seeing utilization potentially creep up again and this plan is experiencing that.
Thank you.
Any other? Sure. Thank you. So there's, I, we're not asking for a vote today, but just a little bit about the process. So we did meet with the insurance committee, fourteen or fifteen people, had some great discussions, all these things. John was there and Cindy was there as well. And representation from all over the district, which was fantastic. So we explored a number of options, of which this was the least impactful. And this was the one that the committee voted in favor of. I realize insurance changes are always hard, but this is, after discussing all the options, this is the one that garnered the most support within the committee, so.
I think we hit enough questions, or do we have any more? If not, I'm seeking a motion to move to recommend to the full board to accept the presented health insurance plan design changes effective January first, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much, thank you, John, for being here. I'm seeking a motion to adjourn. Oh, excuse me, not, don't take it.
Just one quick note before people leave. Important day, Mr. Seiler, can you raise your hand? There he is, Larry Seiler has been our director of building grounds for the last ten-plus years, has done a phenomenal job. And this is his last board meeting, his last day in the district is tomorrow, so we appreciate him being here, not tomorrow? Oh, next Tuesday, I'm trying to push him out too early, great, we have one more week. And next to him, just Ryan Hermansky, we hired Ryan last year, so we had a nice transition period, Ryan's great too, so thank you both for the work you do and Larry, thank you for the last ten years, so, just want to make a note of it.
Thank you very much. I'm seeking a motion to adjourn. And everybody had motioned and yes and second, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. I'm seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Questions? If none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And item number three, board book attachments include the expenditure budget presented in function format and the revenue budget presented in source format as required per Wisconsin State statutes. A presentation is also included to show many of the highlights of the final budget and how it has changed since the annual meeting. With that, Mr. Fagut.
Great, thank you. Just looking at the budget calendar, we are highlighting the last meeting of this budget cycle and I think in May, you started with the adoption of the initial, presentation adoption of the initial budget to work out these systems. Well, before that, I think we will bring you some initial estimates in December. January, so we'll start this whole fund cycle again pretty quick. Just talking about the mill rate changes last year to this year. From increases in current exemptions, increase in debt service levy, reasons. A actual increase in equalization aid, which brings our rate down and then increase in property values, which will be pretty flat, but it's going to bring the total rate down. Really, since the annual meeting, so a lot of these will be changes since the annual meeting. And since then, it's been pretty sad, a small decrease in state aid, a small increase in the general fund levy. And a decrease, I guess, a decrease in equalization aid. So the overall mill rate staying, same, same as what was adopted at the annual meeting. Just going to test my eyes, but some changes from the, from the annual meeting. If you want to look down at the bottom right, the revenues, sort of related to the revenue limit. We have that noted increase in the property tax levy, that is the fund ten levy, and then the decrease in equalization aid, so that the overall revenue limit actually went down by about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Any other questions on changes, very small improvement back to four hundred. So we talked about this three or four times now, but just to keep bringing it up, that our expenses have outpaced our rate of revenue limit growth in terms of inflation. So this year alone, revenue lagged over nine million dollars behind CPI, now that inflation rate has cooled, so hopefully next year we'll see a flatter line. This year, they're nine million dollars. So if you aggregate those eleven years, we'll have thirty-four million dollars in total. So FTE membership, this is similar to enrollment, there's a formula applied to it that makes it slightly different than the actual student, student count, the third Friday of September. So we have the, the base years, so what last year was based off of in the current years, the three-year rolling average, the overall rolling average actually only went down by four, but last September count to this September count actually went down by eight. So significant year-over-year decrease, but because it's a three-year average, we only saw that number go down by four. Just enrollment, membership data, John touched on this a little bit earlier, we are seeing that decreasing enrollment, decreasing enrollment, and then our open enrollment. The trend is flat, so that's good, but we do still have more people enrolling out than enrollment. Okay, so just a little bit more about what's happened since the annual meeting. You can see there above, above the dotted line is the annual meeting, or the dotted line has changed out of the very sense. So that state aid decreased by about four hundred thousand. The revenue limit decreased by just nine thousand, that difference is the general fund levy went up by a hundred and thirty-three thousand. The debt levy at the annual meeting was about twenty-four point six million, that's been down closer to twenty-four point four million dollars. The net exchange of all this is that the, the fund twenty levy went up, went down more than the general fund levy went up. So the total levy is down about a hundred thousand dollars, ninety-nine thousand dollars, that's the annual meeting, but it is important to note that it's about one point three five more than last year's plus. So private vouchers, we have students that have vouchers within our district that taxes for. The district does not get to spend that money, you take that money when it's taxed, send it straight to Madison and they distribute it to private schools. So the direct impact to the district this year is almost three million dollars, the two point nine million dollars we were looking at. You can see that one of our seven vouchers went up by over seven hundred thousand, the other one up by about fifty-seven thousand. So what's the net impact to the taxpayer? Is that fifty-two cents in the mill rate rate for fifty-two dollars per hundred thousand dollar home, which is up three forty-two cents last year. Talking about that a little more, we'll start on the top left, and we'll carry right down. So voucher students, you can see year-over-year continuing to increase, this year was up twenty-six, turned into seventy-six versus the additional tax levy because of this is up to two point nine million dollars from about two point one seven last year. As a percentage of the levy, we've gone from fifteen, sixteen, you know, one percent, almost nothing, to almost six percent, a sizable chunk of the levy. And then in terms of the mill rates, again, we talked about this, but you know, in the last six or seven years, we've gone from very little part of the overall mill rate in the teens in terms of cents to fifty-two cents of our eighty-eight through. Any questions on the private voucher program? Okay, we've talked about this before, but to touch on the debt depony strategy, so this is the general fund levy and then the levy in funds thirty-eight, thirty-nine, to help pay off our long-term debt. We have retired, had a scheduled fifty million dollars of future debt by using this strategy. And we've also saved the taxpayers over nine million dollars in interest payments that they would have otherwise paid if we hadn't paid off the debt early. So fifty million dollars is what I think we have as a principal paid off early. And while we've been applying this strategy, the district mill rate has also decreased, so it's not that we've been increasing the mill rate to pay off this debt early.
Do you want me to do the whole presentation? I can. So the tax allocation for this year, you can see down there in the bottom right, we have our total of both levies, the forty-nine million, five hundred ninety-one thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars. And then on the left, we have the certified values and we got these at the beginning of October for the city and townships that make up the district. So you can see the percent that their, their property value is as compared to the total of the district, so each percentage for each township. And then it breaks down their general fund, debt service, the total of those two, and then the community service levies for the, for the district total, so you can see what the taxes are there. Again, I want to stress that the board only adopts the levy, you do not have a say over how someone's home changes in value year-to-year, so. I would like to say that, I've been telling you that we were looking at about a three point zero two percent increase in the levy and now on the bottom right, you see it's two point eight one. The levy did go down by that about a hundred thousand dollars and that's in correspondence to some less than expected, I think, property value increases. We're looking at eight point eight five percent compared to, I think we've been saying about nine point oh eight percent in the last couple of meetings. So those are a couple of changes that did occur in this slide. Year-over-year levy changes by fund, you can see that the general fund year-over-year, so we have twenty-three, twenty-four on the left, twenty-two, twenty-three next to there. The dollar change, year-over-year, down about four million dollars this year, fourteen percent. Debt service fund, thirty-eight, relatively stable, a huge part of that is those energy payments. And then long-term debt, fund thirty-nine, this year is up about five, five million, three hundred thousand. So thirty-one percent sizable chunk, eight, and the community service fund eighty, that will stay flat year-over-year. So brings us to our total, total levy and total percent change, two point eight one, again, that one point three compared to last year. I'd like to say again that, that we are expecting about three percent in that new construction. So that increase in the levy should be for the most part applied to that net new construction. And then year-over-year expenses by fund, you can see that we're having some big changes in fund ten. Smaller changes across the board, the other one that, that's pretty sizable is that in fund thirty-nine there, about halfway down the page, you can see that seven million dollar, forty-nine percent increase. We are going to pay off a good chunk of that most recent loan for the twenty twenty-two referendum, we took out the nineteen point eight million dollar loan. And we are going to pay back a good chunk of that this year, so you're seeing increased expenses there. So this is my last slide, these are the two necessary motions. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those now.
Since we have the motion in front of you, if you could take a look at that versus me reading all of it.
What, just one question on the previous slide.
Yeah.
The increase in fund ten, the seven thousand, six, I'm sorry, six million?
Six million.
Six point two million, what, what goes into that?
So a huge chunk of this, and I apologize for not mentioning, this is a good question. We have the end of S R funding, and pretty much all of that occurs this year. So a huge chunk of our increase in the general fund that we're looking at will be both increased revenues and increased expenditures from that potential S R funding, so next year, don't quote me on this, but I'd expect to see that number come back down because we will have less grant funding. In the last presentation, I think I talked about about nine point nine million dollars total of grant funding this year.
Okay, and then next year, because of the S R fund offset, we have to decrease expenses commensurate with where that revenue goes away.
Exactly.
So all of those, all of the staff that were hired through S R funds are noted and can be segmented out.
And I don't want to speak to the staffing plan without looking at it, but yeah, the, the people who are in S R funding will no longer be able to be funded by S R funding. However that breaks down in terms of the staffing plan, I don't know, but we won't have that available next year past the end of September, we'll have a really small piece, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That's a good question, and the fact that the S R money is going away and that's going to be, you know, obviously people that have been employed for the three years, that those positions will then go away, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, that was a good question.
So if you move to the last slide and we take a look at the motion, I'm seeking a motion to approve the final twenty-three, twenty-four budgets as presented. Please take a look at the numbers before I get a move.
So moved.
Any follow-up questions? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Agenda item number four.
We gotta do the tax levy one, too.
Oh, excuse me, let me see that, okay. I'm gonna just read that one, twenty twenty, I'm seeking a motion for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four final tax levy approval. Motion to adopt a final tax levy of forty-nine million, five hundred ninety-one thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars representing the twenty-four million, five hundred fifty thousand, six hundred twenty-two dollars. For the general fund, twenty-four million, three hundred seventy-nine thousand, zero, seventy dollars for the debt service funds and then six hundred sixty-two thousand, two hundred dollars for the community service fund.
So moved.
Can I hear a second?
Yeah.
Hearing aids were off. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Agenda item number five, administration recommends a final tax levy of
That's the one we just did.
We just did that one, so that's why I was looking at that, okay? Five, there we go, end of the referendum plan, at the September Education Operations Committee meeting, Josh Fagut, Assistant Superintendent of Operations, shared a presentation on the potential project list from, for end of the referendum. And I'll open up the questions in presentation at this point in time.
Yeah, so I, based on the discussion tonight, I don't know if you guys want to go through this whole thing, I did want to talk about a couple of things, if that's okay. This is the current budget to date, I highlighted, and this is the exact same presentation from last time, so you know. I highlighted a couple of things, I did want to say, and we'll talk about this later, that eight point six, the district-wide FFNA in technology is highlighted because it was considered potentially a resource, so I, I did want to make sure when we talk about going forward on the next couple of slides that we note that, I heard some board members may not be interested in that, understand? And then the Hawthorne Hills Road, that is highlighted, that one point nine number, the most recent estimate that we've received from Nexus is, is closer to three million, so that number's gone up significantly. And then I would just like to talk about at the bottom, Corey brought this to my attention earlier, before the meeting. We have the two million dollars for grant. But then that number in the original budget, that number is not in the design or bid budgets. But those design and bid budget totals do total all of the, of the projects. So it's not as if that, that grant money is just sitting out there available for use. Some of the projects have come in higher, for example, Waso West, the design budget was higher and then the bid budget was also higher. So I just wanted to clarify that since I had the question. So we, let me go back here, then we also have that two and a half million dollar number, two hundred, two million, five hundred forty-five thousand dollar number in terms of what are our current available resources right now, what could we use to, to potentially do some of these projects? What are some other resources? And I don't have to walk through this all again, but we do have the Hawthorne Road that was talked was talked about. I did talk about a potential little bit of F F N savings from some of those buildings that we are going to repurpose, or the initial plan was to repurpose, depending on what the board decides to do going forward. And then the, the overage on remaining bids. So I just wanted to clarify those couple of things. We talked about some other options and borrowing from fund balance, fund forty-six, against the revenue limit, those types of things. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on that. And then this was the part I, I wanted to speak to in terms of, we have the, if you, the second-floor science wings, the concrete roof deck, third-floor envelope and classrooms. And then that's on the right. On the left, we do have the recommended list of projects. That totals about three-point-six million. If you take out the parking, which was discussed tonight, that'd be closer to two-point-eight million, which brings us in line with, with where we have, what we have in terms of current resources. I don't know if we, I'm asking the board, I don't know if we want to bring this to motion, or if we want to take time to chew on what was talked about tonight.
So I'm, I'm still confused. I went back and watched the meeting from the ninth, and I was absent. The Bleacher Gym Storage Community Room, I thought that was supposed to be in because it was in the original scope. How, how is it still sitting outside?
So I, you're exactly, you're exactly right. On June twenty, on June twenty-second, there was a meeting to bid it as an alternate, not with the board. On June twenty-sixth, we should have communicated to you that it was bid as an alternate. Then when I brought it to you, it was presented as an alternate, not in term, not in the initial package. You correctly pointed out that it should have been. So I changed this, this slide to say, is it in the initial scope? Yes. And if you want, I can one-hundred percent go and put it back in here, in term, in this budget. Just since I presented it that way that one time, I wanted to be consistent with the caveat that it should have been presented the other way up front.
No, understood. I just, I didn't know that, is there still debate amongst the board whether or not we're gonna do that? Because it was in the same, it, it was in the original referendum proposal?
I think if there was gonna be a debate about it, the debate would be the fact that when we approved that ninety-five percent bid, it wasn't at one-point-two-two, one million dollars for this community room. So it, it was, what was it?
Four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand dollars. So we have never approved spending one-point-two million dollars on this, um, Bleacher Gym Storage Community Room.
Right. So the, but one benefit of making this an alternate is you get an actual bid on that, on that part of the project being carved out. So we brought it to the board in context, um, to see what direction you'd like to go
So the worry that I have with any of those, but especially the ones that weren't included, is, so we, so we approved the restructure back in February, and one of the criticisms we've had is, um, you didn't know all the details and all that stuff before you approved it. And what did we say? We said that, um, administration asked us to give the go-ahead that we approved the concept of it before having staff spend countless hours doing all this studying to only then find out the board has no interest in it anyway. So now we're going through and doing the planning and doing the studying, we're finding things out. And as we find out some of these extra expenses and some of these other issues, um, I don't know, I, I don't know that we've run into a problem yet that is insurmountable, but we may have, or we could. And what I'm worried about is if, if we end up, for whatever reason, not merging the high schools, then that means the fifth graders aren't moving out of the elementary schools. And if the fifth graders aren't moving out of the elementary schools, that the elementary consolidation isn't happening. And if the elementary consolidation isn't happening, that two-plus million dollars for grant goes back in. That road goes back in. Um, the, all this money goes back in. And so until we get to a point where we've gotten through all of the curriculum and the planning, and we know for sure that we're good to go, um, I don't think we have, I just don't think we have extra money that we can count on right now. We might be using that F F N E just to accomplish some of the things that were in the original plan, like the two-million-dollar entrance on grant, which I don't want to do. I don't want to invest two million dollars in a grant, but if the, um, if the elementary schools aren't merging, then that's what we're doing.
Oh, well, maybe you just have to change the details of the plan, and you put fifth grade back in.
Yeah, but if you...
Right now, it seems like everything's hinged on the four science labs, right? If you don't do the science labs, you're not doing the merger at secondary.
In...
But then what I said about doing stuff at...
Yeah, unless, unless a different, unless a different solution to that. That's the only solution we've been given to the science, is to add additional space. So there'd have to be a different solution if we're not approving the adding additional space. And I'm not opposed to adding additional space if we can afford it. I think we need it. I think you brought up, Corey, that it's a need, whether we merge the schools or not. I think it's a need either way.
I think there's been more than enough information given to us by the teachers that it, it has been a need for years. It's just, we've only talked about it for four weeks, right? And that's the, the shocker effect, in that there was no planning, there is no six-point-nine extra necessarily without piecemealing something together.
Yeah, and I realize that if we don't, I mean, if we don't move on this, then that may mean that, okay, then if we don't have a solution to the science issue, if one isn't presented to us, that may mean that, um, the only option is to add those rooms, and that isn't gonna, if that doesn't happen tonight, then that means it happens some other time, which means it's not gonna be ready for fall of twenty-five, and that might mean that things get put on hold for a year. If things get put on hold for a year because we're not ready to go, it's not great. I don't think it's the worst thing either, though. We're missing one of those high enrollment years, you know? I think we've got a lot of planning and a lot of questions to answer, so, um, having this get delayed by a year isn't enough of a reason for me to say, yeah, let's just go ahead with this, and then end up with not having enough money to complete everything in the end. If, if we get delayed a year, we get delayed a year, or more.
I don't disagree. There's still too many unknowns, way too many.
You, you agree that we should get the rest of the answers and delay it a year, potentially, based upon those answers? Or you don't want to spend the one-point-two on something that...
You heard my position earlier. I delay most of this plan permanently and invest in areas where it makes sense. Some of these are included in that, some aren't. But that's a much broader discussion that I think we can dive in in two weeks. But right now, I agree with Lance. There's, there's just not enough information about the rest of the state of the district to be able to say with certainty that we can spend more money here. Could I ask? We've got, um, our partners from Nexus are here, talk about if we don't make this decision, what does that mean in terms of the West project? I think that would be some good information for the board to understand. Is there anything you could add to, what, if, if we say, let's not do this right now, what happens at the West project? Because we've already started.
Yeah, but what part are you saying this doesn't happen right now? Because is it this list?
What we've agreed on is the footings, right? There's...
Because we already told you, we're gonna pay for the design stuff, and we're gonna put the footings in for the elevator shaft, okay? That's, that's gonna happen, because we already said that. And if you need a real motion and a vote, we, I'd be more than happy to do it. Are you saying we're waiting on the bleachers, the ceiling tile, thirty-year roof, band sound? Is that what we're asking Nexus to explain what's gonna happen in the schedule?
No, if we don't do the second floor, we've done some work already. I just want to understand, you know, what, so if we say, let's not add the second floor, what, what impact does that have on just the, that front one-story addition?
I can speak up. Right now, with where we're at in the construction process, and Corey, you just said something that maybe I don't know, is are we going to put in foundations to include the elevator shaft? If that answer is yes, then I, then we have the information we need to continue going. I mean, as of tomorrow, depending on the one, whether we're gonna start excavating in that area. So it is real-time things. If we're gonna move forward with footings and foundations with the original footprint, we can do that. But if we need to do footings and foundations to accept the elevator and all of the lobby around the elevator, that is a decision that we're gonna be through then later, or it's gonna have to come back down the road and be reworked, which is certainly an option, but it's not necessarily...
Well, we talked about that two weeks ago, and did thumbs up, two weeks ago.
So if the design's ready, it hasn't been released to contractors.
So what's, so do we need a real vote? But then we need a real cost.
Hold on a second, Corey, just so I'm clear. That future proofs it, as we discussed during the original referendum, for additional expansion if and when it's needed at West.
And a, and a little, sorry. And a little bit more, what we're talking about is, I think, I think you're talking about the footings that we originally approved quite a while ago, um, to make it able to handle second floors.
Yes.
Right? But what we're talking about is also, there is the issue of, while they're in there doing that excavating, do we also want them to make, do the footings for the elevator? So that, that also would be future-proofed for the same thing. We talked about it at the last meeting and said, yeah, you know...
Well, if there's all, if there's going to be any possibility of a second floor at Wausau West even into the future, we have to put the foundation in for the elevator. You can't put a second floor in and not have an elevator.
That's exactly my question. What, we approved a half-million dollars for footings. I assume that included all of the cost for doing a potential second and third floor down the road. How, how does not include...
Which means Pat's saying that you should have had it in the five-hundred thousand for the elevator shaft.
It wasn't designed. It wasn't designed.
Can I answer? So, um, the footing and foundation package that was increased was support to, to support additional weight of the existing footprint from that first, that front addition in the southwest corner. So what we're talking about is the connector pieces, which is outside the original necessary, um, you know, so, you know, the addition that's built in the front office of the theater, just in those areas. I'm sorry if I'm not being clear, but it's just, what we have in the southwest addition is all that was needed in the referendum, and then we beefed up that specific footprint to be able to receive additional load. So what, the footing and foundations that we're talking about now is to connect it into the rest of the building, which is an addition, which is more square footage than what that original footprint needed to be successful.
The elevator isn't, isn't inside of this area, it's separate from it. So those footings could be added later if we wanted to.
Yes, they could.
We, you just were saying, we got the people out there working on it right now. We could do it cheaper now if, while we have everybody out there working on it now than later.
Absolutely.
And there's some, there's some trade where we wouldn't need footings to hold the original building that we're building because of the larger increased footprint that would include the elevator shaft.
So was it ever contemplated to do a second and third story without an elevator? It's required, ADA requirement, right? So we knew we had to have that. So when we were told, here's five-hundred thousand dollars to future-proof the building with footings, that wasn't the entire picture. That was five-hundred thousand to future-proof it with part of the footings, but then there's the rest of the score, right? So we were told Brewer's six, Rangers what? Now we're left with an additional cost over and above the half-million dollars that we approved, that I assumed was for the footings, all the footings, to do a second and third What sense does it make to tell us that that's what the half-million dollars was for when it wasn't in totality? Am I, am I nuts, or what?
No, but those are the things that we asked last, last time we met.
I watched the meeting, I didn't get it, I didn't see an answer to that.
I guess my response to that would be is, you know, I mean, we're building a very large addition in that portion of the building, and we're in an inflationary time, we're having market issues that we're dealing with, and we could, you know, we're trying to keep that original addition so focused on so we can implement the direct needs of this, of that building. So add all those additional, I mean, okay, it could be a conversation that we could have, but at the same time, we're also trying to be as cost-effective as possible without shutting the door for the future. And so by not including those footing and foundations now, we would never be, for the, for the addition, not the elevator, we would never be able, never easily be able to build another future addition. The elevator, that's something that also, we didn't shut the door to add that elevator in the future. We just wanted to make sure that every decision that we made allowed to keep the project moving forward and expanding the debt as the district needs change.
Okay, I'm, I'm done. I don't need any more information. I will tell you, if that wasn't intentionally deceitful, it was extremely negligent. Because what we were sold, we were told that future-proofed it. There was no and/or buts asterisk, none.
Pat, with all due respect, we gave you the ability to build a second and a third floor. It was not to design a second and third floor where we had no idea what any kind of curriculum would be, what kind of rooms were going to be.
You knew you needed an elevator. That's part of the addition. That's what we're talking about.
That's the connection to the building.
The reason that would be a building that would connect second floor to the other floor, is it a good idea to do this? That's why we were looking at it when all of a sudden this came to light that excavation was happening, and this came to light recently, we were like, is that, that second, that second floor was gonna be a possibility?
Okay, I'm, I'm good. Can't move on.
Okay, so, so let me pick up where Pat left off on that, um, where you led us into it. If we have a, an elevator already that would connect, and we can move into that second level without putting a elevator shaft in there, is that a possibility so that we don't have to have another expense? Because we already approved the half-a-million to get the foundation beefed up for a potential second and third floor. If we already have an elevator somewhere in the building, is that accept, is that acceptable by the state and by laws? Because we have one.
We can research that with the architectural code review team, but yes, one elevator likely was applied in the building. It was avoid somebody going deep back by the shipping and receiving area, going, you know, coming in, going all the way back, and then coming up, person, person all the way over to, uh, where is the button?
Well, this is a very good conversation because of the fact, if it can save us some money and not have to put a, an elevator shaft in there for a potential second and third floor. I mean, I've been in schools where the elevator was on the other side of the building for the student to get into, to move over, but it was accessible and it was acceptable. So that's why I'm asking the question. Let us just look at that. We don't have to add more money to this, it's better for all of us. Am I wrong?
Well, I don't think we have the money for it either way, so, um, that's my concern. Or, or we don't know if we have the money for it, I should say.
So I think we'll take a look at possibly using the one elevator that we already have and move forward on that, and let's get potential foundation in for the potential second floor when we decide that, uh, that is what we're gonna do for sure.
So don't do it now?
The elevator.
And not, and not the elevator, of course, but don't even do the footings for the elevator now?
That's why I'm asking it.
That's the question, though.
That's the question. If we don't have to put another elevator shaft in, better for us.
So we do, we do realize that the current elevator is way in the back of the school, right? Back by the, uh, back by the locker rooms, back in that shipping and receiving area. Just, so we're all aware of where the location is.
As long as it, by law and by state, uh, expectations, we're fulfilling our obligation to our ADA situation and everything, then let's accept that, one elevator.
Yeah, but if we decide that, if we eventually some, at some point decide we, we are going to add additional rooms, additional stories, I think, I think we're probably gonna add an elevator, too. Because, um, I don't think we want to just barely get by the, the legal requirements for it. I think we'd want to have it pretty easily accessible. So that's why at the last meeting, I thought, you know, I don't really like the idea, I think it was a hundred and something thousand dollars was the estimate. Um, I don't like the idea of, of spending that, but if it sort of future-proofs it, um, just like we invested on the footings for the, the building part of it, would make sense to do it for the elevator, too.
And these are options. These are options, you know, one or two.
Well, they're digging right now.
Right.
So, um, could we do the one-seventy to put the foundation in?
So could we do the 170 to put the foundation in for the elevator? And then we'll move on from there.
Well, what would be the, what's the difference if we instead do it two years later?
You gotta tear up your floor.
You're tearing stuff apart.
Then I, I think it makes sense to, to do it now for the same reason we did the footings on the, on the building. Because I just don't see us putting a second and third floor on there, whether it's a year from now or 10 years from now and not putting an elevator there. I understand what you're saying, that, you know, maybe not, you're throwing out the options, but I just, I just don't see it happening.
I don't disagree with that. My frustration continues to be in the, in the partial answers that we get. Like, are there any other expenses relative to the second and third story possibilities that are not in consideration?
There's going to be HVAC, you know, that has to be designed in, right? I mean, that's the thing, this is all about the, the addition, not the foundations, no?
I'm saying, what do we have to do to make sure that this thing is future-proof? Whether it's in two years or 20 years, where we can go in, do a second and third floor with the elevator? It sounds to me like now that number is $670,000.
So we are a quarter of the way to the design. So part of the design process is to identify. I mean, we have big picture things that we did discuss. We have the second floor, we have the third floor concrete group. That's a decision on whether we want to move to the third floor or not. So there's, like, those, those big items are identified. But the more probably granular, granular level of detailing is, that's what the design process is all about, is to be able to collaborate together, get good feedback, and be able to come up with a good solution that works. We're, you know, the construction, the budget, the schedule, the use, all of that together. So it's a collaborative process that, but I guess to build on your point or to respond to your point is we are, you know, as design comes through, issues come up. And I don't know, as an example, by laying out the elevator, we looked at different efficiencies in the floor plans, and we might be able to bring up additional space out of, like, the elevator lobby, that as we tweak and collaborate together, we might be able to get another classroom out of that footprint. And that's just the nature of how that collaborative process works. So we get the big rocks up front, and then, you know, as we go through, we get farther into the details. And so as far as, there are unknowns, and that's why we work together to get through to the end. But we do know we need the HVC system, but we don't know in all cases what, and this is just an example, but like structurally, what might be in the way of getting a pipe through a building. So then those are some of the issues that come up. So right now, with the foundations, we're looking at all the underground work that could potentially be affected in that area, whether there's utilities, you know, the future drainage of that elevator pit and how it ties into the rest of the stormwater system. So all of those discussions come up. We go from a high-level estimate and even design parameters into the finite details. So we're about 25% into that right now. I can't foresee the future. And I also, what we're, the product that we're trying to deliver is something that allows you to make decisions in the future. There's been minimal discussion with us on what that third floor might mean. Our rooms might be different than like a general classroom as far as infrastructure and things like that. So what we're trying to do is get into a template, which, and I know it's more than a template, a structure that we can work from to allow for these conversations to happen in the future with our best guests today.
No, I, I appreciate that. And I'm, I'm just saying, my, my frustration is with not getting the entire picture on these things. That's my frustration, plain and simple. That's, that is it. So if it's $170,000 for the reasons Lance mentioned, I don't have any issue with that. If that truly future-proofs it. But please don't come back and say we need another 50 grand for some frickin' electrical thing that we don't know about, or whatever it is.
We're, we're trying to keep as close to the dialogue as we can as we're going through this process.
I, I understand that.
Or at least minimize it, that's part of the risk.
They're going to be a new found thing, this construction, you know that, Corey, that it's going to happen. We're just trying to discuss this because this is where we have to discuss this and are there other ways. My option, I don't like it either, not having an elevator in a very accessible area for the potential future for our students. It's not a real good plan. But talking about the foreseeable future, we're, we're asking you just to make sure you look down the road a little bit, and you're still going to find things that happen that you didn't, you didn't see them before. No, so, all right, any other discussion?
So we'll do the foundation for the elevators. Okay, and nothing else?
I, I think not yet.
Not at this point in time.
Not until we know that we actually have this money available.
And when are we going to know that? What, what's the benchmark, guys? That's my question.
Well, I think the, well, I don't just want to say what I said already, but I think as we go through this process, when we get to a point where we've got the curriculum down, and we've got the classes down, and we've got everything down, and we know there aren't any roadblocks that prevent us from doing the secondary merger, like that, we got to get to that point. Because if the secondary merger doesn't happen for any reason, then all this extra money we think we have, we don't have. Because a lot of this extra money is, is savings from merging elementary schools. So, you know, we don't, we don't have this extra money if we're not merging elementary schools. In fact, we're going to be short of money if we don't merge our elementary schools because of the overruns on these other projects.
Well, and my other question about that is just, I mean, I agree with everything you said, Lance. My other question and or concern about that is that we've already changed work at Horace Mann and, and promised a building to Montessori, and also promised space, of course, to Red Granite. I'm wondering, does Red Granite, is there space for Red Granite currently in Hewitt, Texas, without any changes?
Not completely, no.
Not completely.
They would need what, fifth grade out?
No, they, well, it depends on the enrollment in the pre-K school, right? That thing's supposed to go pre-K eight in the next few years. So at that point, they had planned on having the whole school.
Remember, they told us they would be able to start out there next year with just portables, to, right, to have the four class spaces? Well, they might only need one portable because the building could allow them to use two rooms inside. So that's really the only difference. And, and that's why I brought it up, because that means, obviously, one, the school isn't closing, we're not selling it instantly, and that means the Hewitt kids don't have to move to Riverview as quickly as maybe we thought. But, but that's it. Now, if they get more than 20 students right away, they get a whole 50 students in the first year, well, then that's going to change stuff.
Well, they just said they're anticipating ADA.
But exactly what you said, we've said Montessori's moving, Lincoln needs to go Jones, right? So there's a few things with our discussions that I'm in agreement with, and obviously I've created something to, to back that up.
Right, but what, even what you created, I mean, and I don't know that we need to ask all these questions right now, you gave some options, and I think it's really important, this is the time to be thinking outside the box. But you talk about getting the 4K out of.
Yep, and I didn't present a solution.
And you didn't give an idea as to where they're going. You hanging out at your house, or like, where are they going? You know, so that's a great idea, but not if they're just hanging out in the street, you know? So it's kind of like, we need a plan for a place for them to go.
So does, so does the numbers that Pat presented us, what, with, whatever modifications they might need to have, does that create a financial situation where it's okay to do secondary mergers to make everything else happen? And then that's the case, then you need the four science labs, right?
Can't do the elementary mergers with fifth graders in the buildings unless we add on to a bunch of buildings.
That's right.
So.
So then there's no money here, right?
There's no, there's no money nowhere.
We'd have to, we'd have to pass a referendum that adds on to elementary buildings to allow the merger to happen with the fifth grader staying in, which would then mean the secondary restructure wouldn't happen because it wouldn't have the fifth graders going into the secondary schools. Because I don't see how we have enough money to merge the elementary schools with fifth graders in without a referendum, unless, unless it would take a lot less than I'm thinking. Maybe you could do it with some wide sweeping boundary changes. Then you probably could, because I, looking at our enrollment numbers that we got today, they're down again, and they're really low, and we've got a ton of small schools. I look at them, and they're 200, 200, 200, below 200. So with some big boundary changes, you could probably do it. You could probably take the leftover money from this, plus boundary changes and do it. But then you're not doing one of the recommendations from the elementary subcommittee, which was, when you merge, try to merge like schools and neighborhoods together to keep the schools and neighborhoods together. That's why the plan developed the way it did. So everything has a, yeah.
Well, we're planning for an alternate, I mean, yep.
So we're not going to put a motion on this right now. And what I would say, this is informational for us. No motion on the, on the table. And we've had our discussion. Is there anything else? Otherwise, we'll move on. Okay. At this point in time, I'm requesting a go in closed session.
There's a health insurance.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, we don't need to deal with that, that's why we're skipping, yeah.
For the 170. The 170 needs to come off the list, for sure.
I mean, I think we've all agreed. I agree with Lance, I mean, nobody.
With the foundation, is that what we're talking about?
And to future-proof with the elevator, because I agree, if we're going to have second and third floors ever at any point, we're going to need an elevator there, because it doesn't make any sense. I mean, the elevator's there so that it's accessible for students who really can't cross the entire building from the other elevator. So I'm in favor of if we're going to be future-proofing for a second and third floor, that we would be also future-proofing with an elevator in that location.
Why don't you just take your sentence right there and put it into a motion, and then we'll move on. I mean, well done.
Okay, so.
It's the elevator foundation, not the elevator.
Right. All right, I move that we move forward with that project money of $170,000, is that what it was? In order to make the elevator what, footings? Foundation, so we future-proof it. I don't know.
I'll second it.
With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Now it's in a motion to move forward with that. Right, now, I'll move to the next item. That is, I request a closed session person to state statutes. Looking at state statute, section 19.85, 1C, F, and G, to discuss administrator contract review.
So moved.
All right, low call, please.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Cody Nicolai?
Yes.
Jennifer Paoli? Joanna Reyes? Corey Sillers?
Yes.
Lance Trollop?
Yes.
Karen Vannenberg?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes. Thank you.